Good evening. I'd like to call the San Bruno City Council regular meeting of April the 9th, 2024, to order. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Alvarez.
Here.
Councilmember Hamilton.
Here.
Councilmember Marty Medina.
Here.
Vice Mayor Salazar.
Here.
Mayor Rico Medina.
Here. Thank you. Now, I would ask Vice Mayor Salazar if he would lead us in the pledge this evening.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Good evening again. And before we start, just to set, obviously, anyone who would like to provide public comment should fill out a speaker card, and that will be turned into the city clerk. The table is up here. Any person wishing to address the city council will be called upon to the podium to speak at the appropriate time. All statements made to the city council must be made at the appropriate time of the meeting and may not be shouted from the audience. Speakers will be allowed up to three minutes to speak, subject to seeing how many speaker cards there may be on a particular topic. Members of the public cannot defer their time to another person to speak, and if the speaker decides, once submitting the card, not to speak when their name is called, they obviously do not have to. In the interest of facilitating city business, members of the audience must not jeer, boo, applaud, or cause any disruption during the meeting, including times when other members of the public are speaking at the podium. If a disruption occurs, I will call a recess if necessary, and also have the right to request removal of any member of the audience who disrupts this meeting. No member of the audience or person speaking at the podium may approach the council at any time before, during, or after the meeting. Any documents being presented to the city council must be provided to the city clerk before public comment. Members of the audience are prohibited coming from the podium up to the dais, and we appreciate everybody's patience and understanding. With that, before we get to the regular agenda—I'm sorry—before we get to public comment, I wanted to begin this meeting by addressing the March 12th city council meeting and make a couple of remarks. And these are for myself, and I'll begin. First, let me start by denouncing the horrific and unbearable human suffering which is taking place in Gaza. It needs to stop immediately. Second, let me make it clear that I reject Islamophobia and all forms of discrimination in the strongest terms. It has no place in San Bruno or anywhere. The day prior to March 12th meeting, a request was emailed asking the city to set aside space in the senior center for members of the public who wanted to attend the council meeting and have a room for prayer and an area to break fast as part of Ramadan. As a practice, the public is not allowed to reserve any space in the senior center during the city council meeting. The city retains complete control management of the facility during the city council meetings. Having never faced this sort of request, and due to the very short notice, staff attempted to accommodate the request with tents, tables, and chairs set outside the senior center. However, members of the public objected to the accommodation and instead broke fast and prayed in the senior center lobby. Last Wednesday, the city manager and I met with several community members and a member of car. The about 80-minute meeting was an opportunity to sit down, listen, learn, and better understand the hurt and disrespect that members expressed on March 12th, most importantly, to find common ground and find a way to move forward. It was a productive conversation. I can only speak for myself, but I found this discussion impactful and a critical first step in what will continue to be an important ongoing dialogue between the city and our local Palestinian community. As mayor, and on behalf of the city of San Bruno, I would like to apologize to those who were angry and hurt at the city's attempts to accommodate a request at the March 12th city council meeting and for the city's statement issued in response to the care letter about that meeting. The statement last week was taken down from the city's website. Again, please accept our apology. And while I want to assure everyone that the intentions behind the actions were never intended to be disrespectful, we understand and acknowledge these decisions were tone deaf and failed to respond appropriately to the community members. Moving forward, I am committed to learning from the outcome of our decisions and looking for ways to strike a better balance between the need for our staff to implement city policies equitably while also allowing for empathy to play a role in situations where members of the San Bruno community are experiencing pain, sadness, frustration, loss, and anger. So with that, I wanted that to be—at the beginning of the meeting—to be read, and then with that, I'd like to move on to public comment for items not on the agenda.
First set of speakers are Karen Levine, followed by Kinda Dawa, and followed by Wassam Dawa.
Wow, this is so official and formal. It's really lovely, actually. My name is Karen Levine. Thank you for allowing me to speak today. I live at 535 Poplar Avenue, and just to get right to the point, we're seeing a lot of paving all around us, which is wonderful. It's great. Our block—I live on the block where we're right by the Allen School, between Allen and Genevieve, and it's like the surface of the moon. I've lived in San Bruno for over 30 years, and really, nothing has ever been done to that block except patching. So I really—I could have rounded up my neighbors, but I didn't have—I just didn't. So I'm here to just—I'm hoping that something will be done. I read back on some old minutes that said that was going to be done, but it was several years ago, and I know the pandemic slowed things down, but I only have three minutes, I know, so I want to get through this. Another thing is—in—so it's the Mills Park neighborhood, as you know, and there are a lot of very unkempt houses. I walk my dog, and it's pretty—it's pretty sorry-looking around the neighborhood. There are cars that I've seen that are left there for a year at a time on the streets, and I would like to be part of the solution. Like, I know that several of the peoples whose houses look really terrible, you know, are not senior impoverished people, because I see the people coming out, but maybe—I'm just wondering if there is some way—I'm retired from the Sheriff's Department in San Francisco, and I'm a—I'm retired from working with the VA in San Francisco, and I'm really a big believer in restorative justice, and I wonder if there's any way to work with the Sheriff's Department, maybe in San Mateo, to get some sort of restoration, restorative work, get some of the youth out here to help with this? Anyway, just an idea. Let's see. As you all know, the Allen School opened and has been—you know, it's beautiful, actually, and I love walking by the Allen School. And I will say, the Allen School landscaping was looking really trashy, which was very sad, all the new landscaping. And I want to say that I went over to the school district to talk to them, and you know what? It's looking a lot better, so I want to just give them kudos. But I'm still on the watch, but it's looking good. I want to give them their props. There—as you know, it's a dead end. A lot of you know that street is a dead end, and the school is there. And I'm very grateful to the city that they redid—there was a retaining wall there, and they redid it, and we had steps to nowhere for several years because the gate was locked, and there was just a set of steps that went to the wall, and you guys took that down. One of my requests, though, is—it's a public area now. It's a retaining wall with this landscaping. I guess I want to know, who takes care of this? Because our water can't reach over there. So just want to know, is that my time? That's my time. And oh, the last thing is, I'm really excited about the aqueduct center, and thank you to all of you who have participated. I watch it every day as I walk my dog in the park. Thank you.
Good evening. First, I'd like to thank you, Mayor Medina, for your apology. I don't have anything written. I'm really going to speak from the heart today. I'm pretty disappointed to see council members sitting here from San Bruno who have disregarded our community after having multiple heart-to-heart conversations and are unable to take a stand and make action happen for their constituents—a very large population of their constituents because they are more concerned about their title and their endorsements and their seats versus doing the right thing. And it's really disappointing to see that we don't have strong leadership in the city. We came today knowing that nothing—no action will be made, and our only request is that Councilmember Salazar make his record—his comment on record, please. The rest of us will be leaving because we are celebrating the final day of Ramadan, and we are supposed to be celebrating with our families today, but instead have chosen to come here to hear this statement. So we just—that is our last ask of you for today. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Good evening. I first want to say thank you for your apology, Mayor Medina. And I hope that moving forward, that we can continue to move past this and work together to weld the damage that has been done in this community. Although it is Day 187 of the genocide, and Mayor Medina, Sandy Alvarez, and Michael Salazar have failed to agendize the ceasefire resolution, you have silenced an ongoing genocide of Palestinians. Those who are silent against an oppressor is as if they are the oppressor themselves. These council members will say that this resolution is not in their purview. Your purview is your constituents, who filled this room up by the hundreds demanding to agendize a ceasefire resolution, which advocates to end this heinous genocide, which our government is undeniably responsible for. Are you aware that our government is in violation of U.S. law and international laws? The Leahy Law prohibits most U.S. foreign aid and events department training programs from going to foreign security, military, and police units credibly alleged to have committed human rights violations. After the United Nations passed the ceasefire resolution, Biden proposed an $18 billion sales—arm sales—to Israel, which is on trial at the ICJ for plausible genocide. Who is responsible for holding our government accountable when they violate the law? Us. Me. You. Your constituents. Your silence is complicit. If multiple cities around the bay are passing this resolution, you can do it too. So it is in your purview, and that excuse is a cowardly excuse. Let me remind the public of the council's also hypocrisy, which is clearer than a magnifying glass lens. The council also has an agenda—has an agenda item to recognize Arab Heritage Month, yet fails to recognize the genocide of Palestinians, completely gaslighting the Palestinian from the equation. In addition, the council fails to recognize it is Genocide Awareness Month. That's like a killer walking in its victim's funeral. April 9th also marks the 76th anniversary of the Yasin massacre, a Palestinian village slaughtered by Zionist militants. Let me remind you, Biden openly calls himself a proud Zionist. I urge shame on the council for not passing this resolution. Ceasefire now. Ceasefire now. Ceasefire now.
Next set of speakers are John Marshall, followed by Virginia Chu, followed by Matt Jones, followed by Andy Jones.
Good evening, council, city staff. I appreciate this opportunity to come up and speak on something that's not on the agenda, but I believe I've heard that it's been discussed for a couple of years now. I'm talking about the parking situation that's been imposed amongst a lot of businesses and residents in the—we'll call it the east side of the El Camino. I reside on the east side, right on the El Camino Real, directly across the street from the fire department. I get a chance to wave to the chief over there almost every day on his departure. I tried real hard to do this without doing this in a public forum. I had an opportunity to speak to Councilwoman Medina. I had an opportunity to speak to Mayor Medina. I was requesting and was told that we'd probably have an opportunity to speak person-to-person with the chief of police because apparently he has kind of like the final direction of what was going to go on with the parking situation. My family's owned this building for almost 65 years in the El Camino, and I'm not exactly sure why there was a parking problem. But now, for me to reside in my family's building, I need to pay to park in front of my own home. I understand parking problems. I understand it very, very well. I also own and operate a business, and I own the building on Montgomery Avenue. I've been down there for about 20 years plus, and all of a sudden, we got contract policing of parking, and we can't even park the way we have been parking for 20 years because we have people coming by giving us tickets at 6:15 to 6:30 in the morning. We're—there's no imposition on any neighbors down there. We all respect each other. We all figure things out. We all work things out. It's a good little community down there on Montgomery. It's a funky street, but we made it all work. We all did. So aside from the parking tickets that we get in front of our shop in particular—in particular—because at one moment in time, there was 47 illegally parked cars on Montgomery Avenue, but I—only I—our business was given citations for parking because our driveways aren't long enough. So I dealt with that. We're dealing with that. We're moving things around as much as we possibly can, trying to be cooperative. We've been a cooperative group of people in our family for a long time. Now, I can't park in front of my own place, and alls I'm asking for is a face-to-face meeting with the city officials that can make decisions, listen to us, and not make us not park in front of our own home from 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. I can see some time parking. I understand it, but I think it's pretty reasonable to have something like a 8:00 to 4:00, or a 9:00 to 3:00, whatever it was before, but to make me park and pay to live at my place, it's not realistic. There's nine adults that live in four units at 574 El Camino Real, and I would hope that I can ask publicly to have a sit-down with those that make decisions on parking enforcement in a residential—very small amount of residential parking on the El Camino Real in San Bruno. I got the time. I heard the bell. I appreciate it. Three minutes is really not enough time. I've spent hours composing emails to try to get a conversation. I request that. My email's on the form. My emails are throughout the city. I would really appreciate somebody to respond. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good evening. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good evenings, city council and staff. My name is Virginia Chu. I'm a Rollingwood citizen, and I'm here to just bring light—no pun intended—that our neighborhood is in the dark. Our lights have been dysfunctional for many years now, and as you may or may not know, our lights there were probably the original lights when San Bruno was built, back in the 1950s. So the technology of those lights are very old, and 95 lights are completely out right now, and they've been out for over a month. And I'm tired of driving in the dark. I'm not even wanting to let my son drive out in the dark anymore, just because of safety concerns. And I just wanted to bring this issue out in the open, that, you know, we are in 2024, but our light structures are not working, and we just want the city council to make a concerted effort to replace our lights as soon as possible, because this is not acceptable to be in this—in this wonderful town in 2024 without working lights. It's like a mockery. And I also realize there are other areas with lights that are not functional either, but I would hope that the city council will make light structures in San Bruno a priority for the safety of its citizens. Thank you.
Hi, good evening, city council and staff. I'm Andy Jones. I'm a citizen of San Bruno. I love that our city has a portion of the street system laid out in the shape of a heart configuration, but does this translate into our professed motto of the city with a heart? Does this mean that we truly deeply care for the citizens who live here? If we closely examine the recent actions of our city's leaders, this motto is on shaky ground in my mind, especially given the recent city council decision not to allow any discussion on the proposed ceasefire resolution in Gaza. That's discussion, not actually deciding on whether you're going to do about it. You may ask, how is this topic relevant to our city's decision-making? Here's how I figure it does. Number one, San Bruno has a very significant and active group of Palestinian citizens. Number two, supporting this proposal can send a strong message to other government officials and cities around our community and across the nation that we are committed to a nonviolent solutions to problems. Number three, our city has had previous actions that have supported anti-violence measures. Recent ones include creating posters that say "San Bruno is united against hate" and raising the Ukrainian flag. So how is this ceasefire discussion request so different from past support, that only two of the five city council members see this resolution as worthy of agendizing? Our own mayor has reasoned that this discussion is not within the scope of our city's business. Please help us to understand how supporting anti-violence and being a voice for our citizens in need is not within the scope of our city's business. I want to believe that we are still the city with a heart. Can you prove it to us? Please agree to agendize and hopefully discuss the ceasefire resolution. Thank you for thoughtfully considering this request.
Hi, everyone. You probably—most of you know me by now. Matt Jones, that was my dad that just spoke before me and just wanted to say—he generally doesn't like public speaking. It's probably been about 15 years since he's given a public comment at any forum. That just goes to show you how passionately he cares about this subject. He's been working on that one for a couple days, and I'm really proud of him. I just wanted to clarify a statement that I made a few meetings back. At a prior council meeting in response to the mayor's proclamation for Women's History Month, I made comments about the need for more women in leadership positions, and I noted that 58% of all commissioner positions are occupied by men, including the vast majority of those in powerful positions in the city. During that comment, I said that there was no women on the Measure G Oversight Commission, and that was an oversight by myself. It was incorrect. The chair is Von Gregory, and I spoke with her directly by phone to apologize and thanked her for her important work in holding leaders accountable through citizen oversight. So I just wanted to say, I spent hours preparing for a lot of these meetings. It's a lot of work. I'm going to make mistakes, and we all are. It's humbling work in the public sector, and I'm happy to reflect on these mistakes and opportunities for self-improvement. So thank you to those who brought it to my attention. In particular, I bring this up because the subject tonight is about apologizing, and I wanted to—it sounds like I missed it by a couple minutes because I arrived a little late, but I wanted to thank Mayor Medina for his apology, and I really wanted to commend Michael Salazar in particular for his email that he sent out to a number of community members a few weeks ago. I just wanted to highlight a couple things he said. Even though he was not at the meeting, he said that even though he heard some of the staff concerns that led to the decision that happened on March 12th, he felt that this should have been handled with much greater sensitivity, especially given the tragic and dire situation our Palestinian residents are dealing with. And he said even though he doesn't believe it's the intent of staff to be hostile and intimidating, he understands that we're, as public servants, sensitive to how our actions are perceived, not just how they are attended. I wanted to just say that that was an incredibly effective apology because it acknowledges that, you know, even though we don't have a certain intent, that it has an impact and that we're willing to commit to doing better. And I just wanted to say that all of us, I think, in the public sector, you know, need to have the humility to be able to work on things together, to put ego aside, to put the desire for power and control over others aside, to promote democracy, to promote community, and really just ask ourselves, you know, why we're here. Are we here because—what are our motivations, and what is our cause that we're trying to serve collectively? Thank you.
I have no other speaker cards.
Thank you all for being here, and thank you for your comments. We're going to move on to announcements and presentations, and the first one is Item A, and it's an announcement that the Community Cleanup Event with Rockology, which is—will be located again as last time at 975 Sneethe Lane, will be Saturday, April 27th, from 8:00 to 11:00. That's 8:00 to 11:00, and that's the Community Cleanup Day that last time was held in October and seems to be very successful. Item B, Issue Proclamation Recognizing April 6th to 12th, 2024 as National Library Week. And we do have a couple proclamations, and Mr. Tim Wallace, are you going to come on up? And I think they want to hear more from those that are here to accept these proclamations than me, so I'll just read a couple, and we can hear from that—Mr. Wallace, or from Tim. Whereas libraries are accessible and inclusive places that promote a sense of local connection, advancing understanding, civic engagement, and shared community goals, and whereas libraries are treasured institutions that preserve our collective heritage and knowledge, safeguarding both physical and digital resources for present and future generations. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Rico E. Medina, Mayor of the City of San Bruno, do hereby proclaim National Library Week, April 7th through the 13th, 2024. During this week, I encourage all residents to visit the San Bruno Library and celebrate the adventures and opportunities it unlocks every day. Oh, there you—I was going to, where'd you go? Go ahead, Tim.
Honorable mayor and members of the city council, my name is Tim Wallace. I am the Community Services Superintendent for the San Bruno Library. It is with gratitude and pride that I accept this proclamation recognizing National Library Week. This proclamation is a testament to the dedication of our library staff, who work tirelessly to serve our community with passion and excellence. They foster a love for reading, provide access to technology, and offer educational programs that empower individuals of all ages. The theme for National Library Week 2024 is Ready, Set, Library, illustrating the idea that in our always online world, libraries provide us something truly special, a place to connect with others, learn new skills, and focus on what matters most. So no matter where you find yourself on the roadmap through life's journey, the San Bruno Library provides an inclusive and supportive community for all members.
Thank you. The next one is a proclamation recognizing— Thank you. The next one is a proclamation recognizing April 2024 as Autism Acceptance Month. And again, we do have somebody from Wings, who's the HR manager, Leanna, who will come up and accept that, and I appreciate you being here. And I'll just read a few, and we could certainly hear more, who would like to hear more from her, not me. Whereas it is critical to ensure that persons living with autism have the access to lifelong supports and services needed to pursue the full-time measures of personal happiness, independence, and community inclusion to achieve their greatest potential. And whereas, much more can be done to better support individuals with autism as they strive to acquire, maintain, and advance in employment pathways and best support their interests and needs, including collaboration amongst state agencies, family providers, prayer and advocacy organizations, providing individual customized support, offering comprehensive training, and conducting better advocacy and outreach. And whereas, the City of San Bruno is honored to celebrate the many ways individuals with autism enhance the quality of our communities, and is committed to fostering acceptance and a sense of belonging as we work together to create a more welcoming and inclusive state for all. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Rico E. Medina, Mayor of the City of San Bruno, do hereby proclaim April 2024 as Autism Acceptance Month. If you'd come to the podium, and please...
Hi, thank you. I'm Leanna. Wings Learning Center is new to San Bruno. We service students from ages 5 to 22 years old that are on the spectrum and have other similar challenges. We're very excited to be here. San Bruno has been very welcoming with the city and the residents. We love our school site. We're at the Rawlingwood School Site now, so we were really happy to come in and fill the building. So I just want to take the time really quick to invite you guys to our Spring Zing. We're partnering with the Autism Society, and we'll be hosting it at the Rawlingwood School Site. It's April 27th, about 4 o'clock in the afternoon. We'll also be holding our open house, so if anybody wants to come and see our program, you're more than welcome to come and see what we do up there. So thank you for welcoming us here.
Councilmember Hamilton.
I just want to make a brief comment. As parents of neurodiverse children with autism, I've been just so pleased to, that we've been able to welcome Wings in our community, and I'm excited to be able to celebrate the first Autism Acceptance Month with Wings as part of the San Bruno community. So I just wanted to make a quick statement. Thank you.
Thank you. And now we'll move on to item C, issue proclamation recognizing April 2024 as National Arab American Heritage Month. And I'll read a couple of whereses. I'm going to have Al to come forward. Whereas through education and cultural exchange, we can foster greater understanding, respect, and appreciation for the Arab American community, promoting unity and inclusivity within our city. Whereas during Arab Americans Heritage Month, we honor our fundamental values and advance equity and opportunity for all people. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Rico E. Medina, Mayor of the City of San Bruno, do hereby proclaim April 2024 as National Arab American Heritage Month. Al?
Mayor Medina, city council members, thank you very much for this opportunity to be here. As this proclamation is a step forward in dedicating a month to the nationally celebrating Arab American contribution and accomplishment. As noted in the proclamation, Arab Americans are a major part of this fabric of this American society, and deserve a month to honor their historical legacy, because Arab Americans have brought diversity and economic revival communities that they live in. Not only that, but Arab Americans have made a longstanding contributions in medicine, law, business, technology, civic engagement, and culture. There are estimated over 2.5 million Arab Americans in the U.S. are Arab Americans like Joseph Hawar, Khalil Gibran, Mohamed Atallah, and Helen Thomas, are trailblazers in their prospective field. Arab American Heritage Month, dedicate times and space to discuss the challenging issues of the Arab American, what and what they face, such as battling negative stereotypes and not being represented in the U.S. Census. Our committee here in San Bruno, California, has been in the hidden soldier of this town, who played a big part in the city's economy, but no one sees them on papers. And now, the community went through a lot in the past 14 months, because of their families and what they've seen in the Middle East, issues like hurricanes, earthquakes, civil wars, and recently the war in Gaza. Our committee is here to show their agony, their feeling, their suffering, and they want this city to know and to be aware. As much as I'm proud of their work, and I think what they did is a great work into bringing awareness to this city, but it worked to start. We have a long way to go, and I appreciate their work and their contribution. Finally, I want to talk about something, really an issue for us. According to the United States, in 20, sorry, in 1973, when they did, when they did the racial classification as white American, African American, Asian American, Hispanic American, Native American, they tucked the Middle East and Middle Eastern people and North Africa under white. There was, according to the United States 2020 Census, approximately 718,000 Middle Eastern and North African in the state of California alone. But what happened, the recommended standard, provided by the Office of Management and Budget, federal government, this standard placed us under white, or MENA under white. We started this work for about three, four years. Finally, last February, we introduced to the California State Assembly, Bill AB 2763, to recognize MENA community in the state of California, and to have a separate box, checkbox, as of January 1st, 2025. Today, the good news, the Judiciary Committee of the California State Assembly did not give us a chance to discuss it, because they voted all in favor automatically, none, a single member. And that's why I think this committee is finally getting the recognition that they deserve, and we are here to stay here. We are a part of San Bruno, we are members of the San Bruno City, to serve and to help and protect this town. I really appreciate the proclamation, and thank you very much, Mayor. It really means a lot to our youth.
Oh, thank you, thank you.
To celebrate this event tonight, the Arab Culture and Community Center, a 52-year-old nonprofit cultural organization, and Bill Air Elementary School are having a major festival at the Bill Air Elementary School on Sunday, April 14th, at 2:00 p.m., to show our culture, our music, our food, our community. And we really like to invite all of you to be present and join us in our celebration. Thank you. I'm the kind of person, I'm not going to keep this proclamation in my drawer. I'm going to post it at every single Middle Eastern store in the city of San Bruno, one month at a time. So everybody in San Bruno will see this proclamation by the city. Thank you very much.
Now, were there any comments in regards to presentations, or?
I have no speaker cards.
So let's move on to consent. Item six. All items are considered routine or implemented by earlier council action and may be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion unless requested. There will be one, there will be one public comment period for all items unless a councilman requests an item for a separate vote. So first, are there any for separate votes from my colleagues? Seeing and hearing none. Are there any for a comment or additional statement or question? Mr. Hamilton.
I have brief comments on F and H.
F and H. Thank you.
I'd like to pull item G, please.
G. Anything else? Seeing, hearing none. Let's start at the top with F. Consider adoption of resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a five-year contract with Smelly Mel's Plumbing, Inc. to provide sewer spot repair services in an annual amount not to exceed $600,000. Councilmember.
So I just wanted to pull this item, you know, there's, we talk about many, many, many different things on our agendas, and not all of them are fun, and sewers are not fun. But there, I think everybody would agree that they're important. And I wanted to pull this item to highlight the great work that staff has done, not just recently, but over the past decade-plus in this particular area. I'll be supporting this item, of course, because it's important that we control sanitary sewer overflows, but I wanted to highlight the history of this, and just by reading one passage from the staff report, that in 2008, the city had 54 annual sanitary sewer overflows. Over the last three years, the city has averages 1.7 SSOs per year from 2021 to 2023, with zero in 20, in, it was zero in 2023 and zero so far through March of 2024. So this, we used to have a major problem with this. We had, we had a, we were sued by a baykeeper. There was a big, big problem for the city over, over many, many years, and just wanted to highlight the work that the city has done to correct this problem and stay on top of it.
Thank you. Any other comments? Yes, Vice Mayor Salazar.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I requested the information that was provided in the supplemental information, and I just wanted to thank staff for pulling that together. I know that was a pretty tall order, a lot of history to pull together in a short period of time, but I did think it was important to highlight, because there had been concerns in the past that we were overspending on these emergency repairs. And one of the big drivers, as Councilmember Hamilton mentioned, we did have a lot of SSOs in the past, and we started investing heavily in the infrastructure. And one thing that I wanted to make sure that was being reflected is that this, the use of this emergency vehicle for repairing these things has been shrinking, and it had spiked to a ridiculous number. It caused us to change a lot of policies, and now it's steadily going down. So even though we're requesting 600, I think it's 600,000 this year, we're not using nearly that much, and so we are showing steady progress on that. So I just wanted to thank staff for pulling that together and helping tell a very positive story.
With that, let's go to G. Consider adoption of a resolution to establish 20 feet of an on-street accessibility parking blue zone curb on Linden Avenue for San Bruno Library. Vice Mayor.
Thank you. So I asked to pull this item because I did have some concerns about how this is being implemented. So I think it is important that we have some handicap parking in that area. However, I think painting a blue stripe alone is not going to be adequate. There's no ramp being provided along with that blue stripe. So if somebody were to take advantage of this parking spot, and they're in a wheelchair, it would be difficult for them to get back on the sidewalk from where they are. And there's nowhere, unless they go all the way to the corner where there's an accessible ramp. I also did a little research and found that there's very little in terms of guidance or regulation around parallel parking that's handicap accessible. And I did see that there are some cities that are doing curb cutouts, so that at least on the passenger side of the vehicle, there would be a flat area with a ramp to get onto the sidewalk. So while I, you know, I commend staff for looking at creating this, I don't know that this would be adequate or even usable. And so I was going to request that maybe staff go back and see if there's maybe a little bit more that we can do, either in finding a better spot that's closer to a ramp, or include the creation of an accessible ramp immediately next to the blue stripe.
And Vice Mayor Salazar, that should not be a problem for us to go back and take a closer look. So we're happy to pull the item.
Anything else on this? Okay, let's go to H. Consider adoption of a resolution to authorize the city manager to issue a request for an RFP for the acquisition of San Bruno CityNet Services. Councilmember Hamilton, please.
Yeah, so I don't want to spend a whole lot of time on it, because we will be spending a whole lot of time on it going forward, hopefully, if the RFP is successful. But just for recent history, for the, for the audience, a few months ago, the city put out a RFI, which is the, just to see if there's any interest in, for people to respond to a, to a RFP proposal. And there was. And so, you know, we're looking out into the, we're looking out into the world to see if anyone is interested in, in purchasing San Bruno CityNet. And why are we doing this? And we're doing this because, you know, as stated in the staff report originally, the enterprise overall was a financial success. Over the past decade, we've accumulated a deficit of $21.2 million. For those of you who know, who've been paying attention and watching our meetings, especially as we enter budget season and we talk about our finances, that is not something that we can sustain going forward. Honestly, even if we were, you know, even breaking even, the, it's, it's a difficult business to be in. When CityNet started, I was here when CityNet started. I was a young man, if you can believe it, a young person. In '71, I was three. But when it started, I mean, it was the bomb. I mean, I was the envy of, envy of the, of my friends, who lived in Millbrae or Burlingame, because we, you know, we didn't have rabbit ears, and we, it was, it was, it was an amazing technology. But as technology moves into the future, and we look, you know, I have DirecTV, I'll be honest. I can talk into my remote, and it'll find whatever show I want to watch, even if it's on a streaming platform. We'll never be there. We're never going to, we're never going to be at the point where we'll be able to compete from a technology perspective. So this is, this, it's going to be a painful thing as we enter this, because there's, there's, there's people who, you know, have had this, had this their whole lives. But when it comes down to it, less than half of our households are, have CityNet. The rest have moved on like I have. We're at 41%, I believe, they sent that number to me. Forty-one percent of our households use CityNet, the rest use something else. And, you know, with an accumulated deficit of $21.2 million a year that we had to, we had to go find money to fill, and that's money we frankly don't have, it's really unfair for the rest of our, the rest of our community to subsidize it at this, at this high level. So I just wanted to make that comment, so that it doesn't appear that we're, you know, having the CityNet conversation, you know, quietly. It's, it's something that needs to be out in the forefront. So that's why I wanted to pull it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from colleagues this time? Vice Mayor.
So just to add on that, I think Councilmember Hamilton very succinctly outlined the financial condition of the enterprise and the inevitable outcome. But I did want to focus just for a second on the fact that there are employees whose jobs hang in the balance. And I just wanted to say again that I think every conversation that we've had up to this point has included some consideration for what would happen to that staff. And I just wanted to let them know that we, we have not forgotten that, that there are impacts there. And Sandeep, if you could convey to your staff that we definitely appreciate all of their hard work. I think the one saving grace of the enterprise is that everybody commends your staff for their, their, just their customer service, their outgoingness, and their dedication to what they do. And so I just wanted to acknowledge that. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. And it is correct, and the city manager will confirm that those folks at CityNet Services, as well as the union, are kept appraised, abreast, and know what's happening, and what the process is and what it entails.
Yes, they are.
Thank you. Are there any public comments on consent?
I have one speaker card. Matt Jones.
Hi again, everyone. I already sent out an email to council on this item, so I'll just keep it super brief, because you guys already have the details. But basically, long and the short of it, I've worked for several different jurisdictions. and the short of it, I've worked for several different jurisdictions across the Bay Area on planning. I'm an urban planner. I also worked through the process in San Bruno. I think that streamlining processes is a great thing. So this is regarding item 6E, about some of the changes to Title 12, the land use section of the code. I guess my comments generally are just that more outreach is needed. These are pretty big changes. And when I spoke with different types of residents, you have some residents who think, you know, San Bruno needs to be dense, adding way more density across the city. And then you have some people who think that, you know, neighbors should sign off on every single project that their neighbor does, you know? And so that, those are the different types of, that's the range, I think, of folks that we're working with here. So I think just being well-versed across the board, from staff to, you know, council, on what these changes mean, and being able to communicate that effectively to help, you know, kind of strike that balance and ease this transition would be much appreciated. So thank you.
Thank you. Any other, I think you said there was one. I'm sorry.
I have no other speaker.
Okay. With that, is there any, I'll bring it back to the council. Any action?
I move to approve, with the exception of item G, which staff will bring back to us later.
Motion seconded. Salazar Alvarez, do I need to restate the motion? Oh, got it. Okay. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passaged unanimously. Item number seven, public hearings.
Item 7A, hold public hearing to consider adoption of a resolution making draft findings and declaring an intent to consider overriding the San Mateo City-County Association of Governments, CSAG, Airland, Airport Land Use Commissions, ALUC, determination of inconsistency with respect to the proposed general plan and Navy Site-Specific Plan Amendments and rezoning of 1101, 1150, and 1151 El Camino Real and 1292 Huntington Avenue, and to authorize the city manager to submit the resolution to the Airport Land Use Commission and the State of California Department of Transportation's Division of Aeronautics, and schedule a public hearing pursuant to Public Utilities Code Section 21676.
Thank you. Before we begin, I'm going to turn the meeting over at this point to Vice Mayor Salazar. I have a conflict because of my, my house and the proximity to it. I'm also, just for disclosure, an alternate on this, Councilmember Hamilton is the delegate, and I have not voted on that capacity as the alternate, and therefore will be stepping down and turning the meeting over to the Vice Mayor.
All right. Ms. Huerta, thank you for reading through all that, so I don't have to. And so I'll ask our city manager to lead us in the staff report.
Yeah, let me introduce Michael Smith, who will be providing the staff report to you this evening.
Thank you. Happy to be here. Honorable council members, Michael Smith, Planning Division Staff. So tonight's item is to hold a public hearing to, for council to consider declaring an intent to override an airport land use commission's determination. So our agenda for this item is we, we're going to start off with the objective, go into the background behind how we got to this point, go over the override process and why it is needed, and then we'll wrap up with the staff recommendation. So again, the objective for this item is to consider adoption of a resolution declaring an intent to override the ALUC determination of inconsistency. And if that is done, then you would authorize the city manager to submit the resolution to the ALUC and the Caltrans Division of Aeronautics and schedule a public hearing. So let's go over the background behind this item. So the need for an override tonight is tied to San Bruno's housing element update. As you know, San Bruno was assigned 3,165 housing units for the eight-year planning cycle from 2023 to 2031. One of the reasons San Bruno was assigned so many housing units was because of ABAG's objective in assigning housing units to jurisdictions was to find locations near transit. ABAG identified the area around the San Bruno BART station as an ideal location for housing of high density. The issue is that the area around the San Bruno BART station is incompatible location for housing. And this is according to SFO's Airport Land Use Plan, also known as the SFO ALUCP. And this is due to noise operations from planes flying overhead taking off from SFO. In assigning San Bruno's housing units, ABAG did not adjust the city's housing allocation in response to this constraint. So achieving 3,165 housing units in San Bruno is not realistically feasible without allowing, allowing some housing units at some density in this area, which is estimated to accommodate 11, excuse me, 1,150 units, and, which is a more than the third of the total amount of units that was assigned to San Bruno. So on the map here is the housing, the map from the housing element showing you the sites. And on January 23rd of 2023, the city council adopted San Bruno's 2023 to 2031 housing element update, which included four potential housing sites near the San Bruno BART station that required either rezoning or general plan or specific plan amendments to allow housing on these sites. These sites, as was read earlier, include sites along El Camino Real, including the Tanfran site. And on this map, they're shown as sites 20 through 22. Now, when council adopted the housing element in January of 2023, you also adopted an ALUC override for these four sites, and that was done at a, at a policy level. That was the first step in realizing housing on these sites. The city is required to rezone these four sites to allow for housing as a permitted use, and the state requires that that be done now. So I won't go into the details here, because this will be before you again, when the actual rezoning comes before you. But this matrix, which is also included in the staff report, kind of identifies how we will be going about changing the zoning and amending the different specific plans to allow housing on these sites. So now let's shift gears and go into the override process and why it's needed tonight. So because San Bruno is located near SFO, it is subject to the land use regulations outlined in the SFO ALUCP. Plan compliance is administered by the ALUC, for which certain members sit on that committee. And this is also done through the San Mateo CCAG. And the review looks at three major factors when it comes to land use planning near airports, and those are noise compatibility, safety compatibility, and airspace compatibility. So the ALUC reviewed San Bruno's proposed rezonings and general plan and specific plan amendments for the four sites, and determined that they are inconsistent with the SFO's noise plans, noise policies, because they would allow new residential units in an area where residential units have been deemed incompatible due to the overflight noise. All four of the sites are located in the 70 to 75 decibel noise contour, and that's, again, due to the planes flying overhead. And this is E, an enlarged map showing the, again, the four sites relative to those noise contours from the plan. So the SFO ALUCP includes provisions for a jurisdiction to override an ALUC determination. Doing so requires three mandatory steps. The first is to hold a public hearing. The second is to make findings, the override is consistent with the purposes of the ALUC statutes. And the third is that the override must be approved by a two-thirds vote of the governing body. And in this case, that means all four, all four votes. So I'll take a moment here with the slide to focus on the public hearing process for an override, which is a two-step process, so it's kind of unique in that way. The first public hearing is to declare an intent to override, which is tonight's hearing. Following the meeting, the San Bruno staff will notify, if the intent is declared tonight, staff will notify the ALUC and Caltrans Division of Aeronautics and allow a 30-day comment period. And that comment, that 30-day comment period is required as part of the process. And then 45 days after notification to those different outside agencies, the city council can adopt the resolution to override the ALUC's determination of inconsistency and make specific findings. And there are two primary outcomes of an ALUC override decision. The first is the land use action can proceed as if it had been found consistent with the plan. And then the second is SFO shall be immune from liability for damages to property or personal injury caused by or resulting directly or indirectly from the public agency's decision to override the commission's action or recommendation. And so I'll take this opportunity also to let you know that we did receive a letter from SFO that is opposed to this action, and that is, was attached to the staff report. Pursuant to the environmental, pursuant to California Environmental Quality Act, otherwise SEQA guidelines, the housing element sites inventory and the proposed amendments were analyzed in the mitigated NEGDEC that was certified by council last January when the housing element was adopted. So these rezonings and plan amendments required for these housing sites would not result in any significant effect upon the environment with implementation of the mitigation measures described in the mitigation monitoring and reporting program, which will apply to any development of these sites. And so now we'll go into staff's recommendation for this agenda item. So staff's recommendation is to adopt the resolution declaring an intent to override the ALUC regarding the identified housing sites, and then authorize the city manager to submit the resolution to the ALUC and Caltrans Division of Aeronautics and schedule a public hearing. The basis for the recommended action here tonight is that, first of all, we feel like orderly development near the airport can be achieved. We understand that the ALUC is going to enforce their plan. We knew going into this that the plan did not allow how, excuse me, housing in this area. But we do feel like it can be done. There are technologies we can require a greater level of sound insulation so that the units are quiet on the inside, which is the main concern. And then also, it would be very difficult to find another location within this community for the amount of units that we're putting here. We've had these conversations with ABAG. They had a lot more units planned for this site. We're only planning 1,150. But again, that's a third of our overall arena, and it would be very, again, very difficult to find another location for those units in the community. And then lastly, the developers of these sites will be required to indemnify the city of San Bruno, ensuring that liability related to noise is assumed by the projects themselves. Okay, and then, and then, again, just a reminder, this requires a two-thirds vote, which in this case is all four members. And this concludes my presentation. I'm available for any questions or comments.
Thanks, Mr. Smith, for that report. My microphone's falling apart. We'll bring it back to staff for questions or comments. Mr. Hamilton.
So I don't, you know what, I don't have any questions. I've got, I got all kinds of comments, but if you both have questions first, okay. So I'm, I, as the mayor said before he had to recuse, I am on the ALUC. I participated in this vote. I actually voted yes. It doesn't, the, the plan does not match up with what the, what the airport wants. And that's basically what this, what this committee is tasked with doing. Frankly, just to be, put all my cards on the table, I think it's fairly, it's a pretty silly committee, because the airport has its rules. Projects come before and say, does this, does this project match these rules? And that's the question being asked, yes or no. Well, no. The airport says they doesn't like new, new development around the airport. So the, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Look, I always, I always hesitate when you look like you're ready to speak.
I apologize for interrupting Councilmember Hamilton, but I was going to ask the chair, the vice mayor, to open the public hearing, take public comment, and then move on to councilmember comments.
Okay. Thank you. So before we do that, then, can I ask if there's any questions at the presentation before we open it to the public? Okay, all right. In that case, we invite the public to comment.
Do I need to make, do we need to motion to open the public hearing?
I think it's been opened by introduction.
I recommend that you just open the public, take, open the public hearing and then take public comment.
Move to open the public hearing.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Now.
I have one speaker card. Matt Jones.
Hi again, folks. Councilmembers, I emailed you comments for this one as well earlier. I think that the timing of this item couldn't be better, because SFO is totally distracted by the Oakland Airport thing right now, so you guys are going to be able to just fly under the radar. Wow, tough crowd. I was going to get more laughs from that. Anyways, so I moved back in with my folks earlier this year. My wages didn't increase because my employer decided not to raise them, and healthcare costs went up. They decided, and so I had a choice to make, which was, do I want to try to get by without healthcare, or do I want to move into my parents' place again? So that's where I'm at. And when I moved back here, I found that there were a ton of people my age that are still living at home. You know, we've had to put things on hold. It's, it's tough to make some of these decisions, and it's affecting a lot of different people. The affordability, there's a huge affordability crisis in the Bay Area, and I feel like we need to have all cards on the table. We need to do everything we can to try to get more housing. This was a question I brought up when I worked for the city, and at the time, it wasn't a feasible thing to do. And so just seeing that this is moving forward is really exciting. I just want to comment on the noise concern. I really thought that staff did a great presentation outlining all of the concerns, and I wanted to just add that I, I think when it comes to having a little bit of noise from planes flying overhead versus having housing, that housing wins in that situation. And I also feel like malls are, are going by the wayside. And so being able to meet our housing standards, I know a couple of meetings ago, I was saying that the city should be doing better. And so I think this is a great way for the city to do better. So I fully support it, and I'm even willing to submit public comment to the ALUC on that as well, and maybe get a few other folks to do so. So I'd love to support you guys in this. I hope you'll make the right choice, and all four of you vote for it. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. All right, Mr. Hamilton, back to you. I don't think there's any more.
Should we close, yeah, so we should close the public hearing first.
All right, I'll take the motion for that.
I'll move to close the public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right. So as I was saying, thank you for your comment, Mr. Jones. The, so what, what the ALUC does is it has its set of rules that the airport has set, that what it wants around the airport. And the ALUC is made up of council members from up and down the peninsula who look at a project or a housing plan, or whatever, whatever it happens to be, and is it compatible or is it not? And that's the question, yes or no? And in this case, no, it's not compatible. I actually, so that's what, what I voted. But I made all kinds of comments, very similar to what Mr. Jones just said, about, about the need for, the need for housing. And there were lots of, lots of comments from other members of the, of the ALUC about noise. I know you, you won't be able to walk outside, and you can't, people can't walk their dogs, and all these different things. And I had to point out, it's like, you understand that once that airplane gets over Tanfran, it's already gone over two neighborhoods in San Bruno that none of you seem to care at all about, that are filled with people who are, have their windows open and are walking their dogs without injury. So So it's, and the other thing, too, is that we're not going to be marching people into forced, be forced to live there. It's a free market, and folks who don't, who, who don't want to, to live under, you know, live there, won't. But we desperately need housing, as, and I completely agree with the, the, the public comment on this. So I just wanted to, I just wanted to kind of highlight that and, and how the, kind of how the sausage is made there. Coming, speaking in front of the ALUC is probably not, not a good use of your time. And it's, it's already been there, it's not going to go back. They, they were fully aware, because I made them fully aware, that I was going to be, that I'm voting with all of you here in this room at, for ALUC, and I'm going to go override you at the next time I see this, so let's all have fun with that. So it's, it's, it's all, it's all, there's, all this is in place because the airport wants to indemnify itself from having people move into this place and say, oh, there's airplanes? I'm going to sue you, SFO. So, and that can't happen because we're going to put rules in place to make sure that the airport's not going to get sued, San Bruno's not going to get sued, developer's not going to get sued, because everybody's going to be made aware that, look, there's airplanes. So I just wanted to, to highlight the way all of that is, all that sausage is made. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hamilton.
And as for myself, I also, I sit on the board of CCG, and so I voted on this myself. Like Mr. Hamilton, I voted in support of their position in denying the application, and, but I know that for us, this is a critical component of our housing plan, and something that it's been, it's been on our radar, so we won't try to fly under it. Been on our radar for a while, so we knew this was coming. And I, I believe that a larger portion of the allotment that was given to us was specifically because they felt that we could develop Tanforan, and so I think the, the state would have a hard time denying that this is, the, the direction we're supposed to go in, so I will also be supporting it.
I, I left out one quick comment, I apologize. And it's also an opportunity to acknowledge your, your airplane pun there that you just made, the, about flying under the radar. I do want to acknowledge that it wasn't, it was not a unanimous vote. Two of my colleagues, one from Rabbit City and one from Foster City, actually voted no in solidarity with housing. I voted yes because I actually wanted it to pass, because it failing there would actually slow down the whole process. This is the fastest way to the end, so I, I thanked them, I thanked them publicly during the meeting for their show of solidarity, but this is the fastest way to get it, to get to the end, and we want to build housing, so let's, let's put our foot on the gas. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hamilton. All right. With that, that brings us to a vote. I believe we can take both of the items together in a single vote, and I believe this will require a roll call vote?
You can do a voice vote for this as well.
Okay, thank you. All right, so with that, I'll entertain a motion to accept the proposals.
I would like to make a motion to accept the, the two resolutions as read by the city clerk.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
None opposed? So that was 4-0. Thank you. And I'll ask the mayor to, there he is.
Now with that, we'll go on to item eight, conduct of business.
Item, item A, consider introducing reading by title only and waiving further reading of an ordinance entitled, "An Ordnance of the City of San Bruno Amending Section 6.36.010 of the San Bruno Municipal Code Regarding Adoption of San Mateo County," I'm sorry, "San Mateo County's Animal Control Ordinance and Making a Finding of Exemption Under SEQA."
Ashley, go ahead, please.
Hello. Okay. Good evening, Mayor Medina and members of the city council. My name is Ashley Croceani, management analyst in the city manager's office. The item I am presenting tonight is regarding the amendment of Section 6.36.010 of the San Bruno Municipal Code Regarding Adoption of San Mateo County's Animal Control Ordinance. The objective for tonight is to introduce read by title only and waive further reading of the ordinance related to animal control. I will first start with a brief background. As you may know, animal control has been one of the longest-running regional shared services in San Mateo County. All 20 cities and towns in San Mateo County participate in the countywide animal control program. Historically, cities have taken advantage of the economies of pooling resources in order to utilize lower costs for services rather than have each city provide its own service at a higher cost. In May 2021, the city council approved an agreement with the county for continued provision of animal control services for a five-year term beginning on July 1, 2021. The county contracts with the Peninsula Humane Society and SPCA, a private nonprofit organization to enforce all animal control laws, shelter homeless animals, and provide a variety of other services, including cat and dog licensing. Next, I will go over the agreement requirements. The animal control agreement requires San Bruno to adopt and maintain animal control ordinances, which are substantially the same as the San Mateo County Ordinance Code. The San Mateo County Ordinance Code requires any animal, including cats, to be licensed. However, San Bruno Municipal Code currently states, "The city of San Bruno shall not require cats to be licensed." The county has contacted the city to provide notice that the city's ordinance is not consistent with the county's, and has further informed the city that it is the only participating city that does not require cat licensing as provided by the county's ordinance. Next is the summary of the ordinance. The proposed ordinance amends the San Bruno Municipal Code to require cats to be licensed to be done by the county, including that all fees will be collected by the county. Thus, the city ordinance will be substantially the same as the county ordinance as required by the agreement. If the city does not amend its ordinance to require cat licensing, the county may seek reimbursement of costs incurred in enforcing an ordinance that differs from the county's. Additionally, the city does not have the option to terminate the county's animal control or services, or the city's obligation to pay the county for its services until June In order to obtain a license, owners must submit proof of rabies certificate for their cats. This results in many community, but, community benefits of cat licensing that you may not be aware of. A few benefits include maintaining a tracking system of licensed cats in case of a bite or rabies exposure. It also increases the likelihood of finding a cat that has been exposed to rabies, and this can help reduce the number of people who must receive the post-exposure rabies vaccine. Licensing can also help owners find their cats if they are lost. In conclusion, tonight's recommended action is to introduce the ordinance listed on the And before I take questions, I just wanted to introduce Lori Morton Fiesel. She is the Health Services Manager and Chief of Animal Control and Licensing. She is available remotely to answer any questions you may have regarding the county's ordinance.
Thank you very much for the report. Are there any questions on the presentation before us that we just received on the presentation? Vice Mayor?
Thank you. I'm afraid to touch this microphone because it's falling apart. So I, I did have some questions on, on the proposed change. I, I mentioned this to Mr. McIntyre during our one-on-one, but, so essentially, we're, we're striking a single, in, in, one, one section of our municipal code was striking one sentence that excludes cats from being licensed. But in reading the entirety of that section of the municipal code, there are other exceptions that are included in there. There's also a clause at the end of the section that we're modifying that says, if there is a conflict between the county's code and our code, our code prevails. So if we are to accept everything else that's within that section of the municipal code, we're still not compliant because our code says that you don't have to register a cat unless you have three or more, or four or more. You don't have to register a dog unless you have more than two, and that, I think, still puts us out of compliance. So I, I think there's going to be a bigger impact here, other than just adding cats to it. I think that the, the dog portion of it is going to be substantially different, and those of us that own two dogs and have not licensed them will now be out of compliance. I don't have a problem licensing my dogs, but if, if the intent here is to align us with the county, then I believe that there may be some more work that needs to be done here. And, and just as a side comment, I, I did some background research on cat rabies, and if, and we're using rabies as sort of the, the reason for doing it, I, I heard that there hasn't been a single case of cat-to-human rabies contagion in, in the last 40 years, and cat rabies are actually very rare. So just to defend our, our cat friends out there, they're not, they're not that dangerous.
So I will take a look at the issue that Councilmember Salazar raised and just see where the inconsistencies might still be. Being, what the city did back in 2005 was adopted the county's ordinance by reference. That section that adopts by reference said we, we adopt essentially what's in the county's ordinance, but it had this carve-out for cat licensing. So we eliminated the carve-out for cat licensing. I will, as we're talking here, look at the other provisions to make sure there's not inconsistencies.
There's also language in there that says that, I, I believe it's, it actually designates a, a person on city staff to be the, the licenser of animals within the city, which, again, is not compatible with what we're, what we're trying to do with the county. So there, there's a few things that need to be cleaned up there, and if we need to bring this back, that, that's fine. We can take the action on removing this one, I'm okay with that, and then, but I, I do think that we'll, we'll still have some issues to clean up on that.
Are there questions on the presentation this time? Are there any comments from the public?
I have no speaker cards.
Thank you. Does staff need a moment, or?
I have a comment, which will buy us by some time.
Thank you. Councilmember Hamilton?
So I own a cat. I own one cat, and when we got said cat, we were contacted by the county saying, please license your cat.
Yeah, okay.
And we, so we licensed our cat, and we continue to license our cat, and doesn't seem to be a big deal. We have one dog, had one dog, she, she recently passed, but when we, when we got our one dog, the county said, please license your dog, so we licensed our dog, and we continued to license our dog. She left us. So not a big deal. So I don't really have a problem with any of this. I, I wanted to address a couple of comments that I saw on, on social media about this. First of all, this is not a money grab from the city of San Bruno. This is nothing to do with the city of San Bruno. We do not, we do not license dogs or cats, it's from the county, and this is about cleaning up our ordinance to make sure that we can stay in compliance so that we can continue to receive services from the county for animal control, and, and, which is an important service that gets, that gets provided. And then, yeah, that's really what I wanted to say, so thank you.
Mayor Medina?
Yes, City Attorney?
If I could respond to, after having a quick, an opportunity to look over some of the comments made by Councilmember Salazar, that, I'm sorry, Vice Mayor Salazar, I am sorry, I apologize. The, the section that you're referring to is a separate permitting section. It's a, it's separate than the licensing. So we, the city still has adopted all of the animal control provisions in the county ordinance by reference. By removing the cats, we're now completely aligned with the licensing and animal control provisions. There is a separate permitting process for certain types of animals, certain number of animals, that's separate and run by city staff. It does not affect the county's ability to enforce licensing and animal control within the city.
Perfect, thank you. That was a very quick look-up, so appreciate that.
Okay, this is obviously an item that has been brought before us with a recommendation. Is there any action?
Yes, Councilmember Medina? Couple comments on social media about, so what's going to happen if I don't license my cat? And it's like, it's a great question, like, what would be the consequence for a resident who decides, I'm not licensing my cat, my cat is an indoor cat? So I thought I'd ask that to kind of have an understanding of it, because there's no kitty police running around, there's, there's no cat catcher. So just interested in hearing from somebody what, what the consequence is for a, a cat owner for not getting a license.
Yeah, we have, we have the, the county staff standing by, we'll see if we can bring them up, but, you know, sort of like any law, you're only in trouble if you get caught, right? And so, I mean, again, to answer the question directly, and I'm not trying to be glib about this, it's, you know, someone's cat's indoors all the time, it never, never, never leaves the house. Probably no harm, no foul, because the county would never know, the city would never know, most neighbors would never know. This really is about trying to prevent rabies, and despite Vice Mayor Salazar's comments, you know, announce the prevention is always better than finding out that, aha, finally there is one. We don't want to be the, we don't want to be ground zero for cat rabies, so I don't know if Lori is standing by?
Yes, thank you very much. My name's Lori Morton Fiesel. I work for County Health, and thank you, Mayor and Council, for having me attending the, then the meeting tonight. You're correct, the only way that someone would violate the ordinance is if an animal control officer came in contact with them. Recently, I'll give you, in Pacifica, there was a resident who their cat bit them. It's an indoor cat, and when the Humane Society went out, the cat did not have its rabies vaccine or license. And what the Humane Society does is they issue a voidable license citation. So that allows the resident, within a set number of days, to go to the Humane Society or to my office and purchase the license, and the citation is waived. I did want to address rabies in our county. We have had a positive cat. It was in the 2000s. We also had a positive puppy in San Mateo in the 2000s. We are considered a rabies endemic county because we do have positive rabies cases in our county each year, and it is usually bats. Bats are the highest carrier of rabies, and if you have an outdoor cat, they're more likely to come in contact with a positive bat than, say, a dog. The licensing is an offset for the city contract, but I can tell you that nobody's going door to door to check on animal licensing. It's on the honor system that a resident of San, San Bruno would get notification and license their animal. So nobody's, there's going to be no door knocking or, you know, harassing of the residents of San Bruno. And again, every other city has now adopted cat licensing, which includes cat rabies. Thank you.
That did it? Okay. Thank you very much for being available and answering that question. Any other questions or comments from colleagues? Any action on this item?
I'll make a motion to, to adopt the action as read by the clerk.
Is there a second? I'll second. Motion, Hamilton, seconded by Rico Medina. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Pass is unanimous. Thank you. Council Committee report outs. Councilmember Hamilton?
Sorry. Oh, worries, just getting my notes up here. So I have my report out from the March 21st regular meeting of the Bay Area Water Supply and Conservation Agency. It's a, it's not too long, but it's longer than usual, there's a lot going on. Total system storage remains high at 91 percent, normal percent is 85 percent, so we're doing, doing good in terms of water storage. We're going to adopt our 2024-25 budget at our next meeting in May. That's going to...
That's going to include potentially increasing Bowska's assessment to member agencies like San Bruno. Initial discussion seems to indicate we'll recommend an increase on the low end of about 3%. And the reason that was discussed is, that was most prevalent, is that, given recent rate pair increases from other utilities like PG&E. So there probably will be an increase to us, but not a huge one. Our lead negotiators from Bowska are meeting monthly with member agencies, including San Bruno, toward finalizing an updated Tier Two plan by the end of June. That's the plan that kicks in in the event of prolonged drought and agreement for how we all share water. That needs to be adopted unanimously by all 26 member agencies before the current plan expires in December 2024. So in October or November, the board will act to either extend the existing plan if we haven't gotten a full agreement, or adopt the plan if we have. And then, lastly, and most importantly, on March 15, the court in a state water board case ruled in the state board's favor on all 116 counts, including all 40-something of Bowska's claims. And this was a lawsuit that was started in 2019, looking at a future water plan called the Bay Water Plan, which requires 40% unimpaired flow from the Cholomey River to head into the delta. And this is the river that provides 85% of the water for our regional water system. When this plan is implemented, if this plan gets implemented, it's going to significantly reduce the water supply available to 1.8 million residents and 40,000 businesses across three counties, which is especially troubling, given that, we were talking earlier about our Reno numbers, and how A-Bag doesn't look at whether you're building next to an airport. They also really don't care if you have enough water either. So given that we have to add all this housing, and it's not just San Bruno, it's all of the member agencies, it's kind of a scary proposition. So the decision is appealable. Bowska is evaluating our current options. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other Council Committee Report Outs at this time?
Yeah, Vice Mayor. Just very quickly, I wanted to share that at the last CCAG meeting, I was elected the vice chair of that board. And as a member of CCAG, I was also asked to participate in a delegation to Washington, DC. And that's where I was during our last meeting. We made the trip back there to petition a number of agencies and lawmakers in favor of a grant that CCAG is seeking, a large portion of which would benefit San Bruno if we were able to acquire it. So I just wanted to share that, you know, CCAG is doing some good work for San Bruno in making sure that we're well represented there.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. See, oh, I'm sorry. Councilmember Medina, please.
I'd like to thank Vice Mayor Salazar for the reminder about chairs that we serve on. And I was elected vice chair of Peninsula Clean Energy. It's the energy provider for 97% of San Mateo County. The energy that Peninsula Clean Energy provides is cleaner and less expensive than PG&E's energy for the generation rate. So I just want to let everyone know about, when you have Peninsula Clean Energy, you're saving on the energy side for electricity, approaching 13% for the generation side of your bill. So that's my report.
Thank you. And congratulations to both. Item, I'll save mine for council comments, not really a council committee report. Comments from council members? Councilmember Medina?
Yeah, I got one a little bit longer than usual. So I apologize in advance for that. So basically, as I was, as I started writing my council comments earlier this evening, I thought about the many projects that are on our residents' mind right now, as evident on social media platforms, on Nextdoor and Facebook. I posted many responses this past week regarding various inaccurate posts. And it can get a little rough online sometimes. However, the majority of our residents are willing to engage in a civil discussion, especially when provided facts leading to council decisions with links to agendas and staff reports. So the three hot topics for this week. One, the Recreation and Aquatic Center. Just about any time you're in downtown, people want to know, when is it going to open? And hopefully soon, we're going to have a better grasp of that date. And what we do know is, once we have the power connection, it's a minimum of eight more weeks after that. So it'll be a little bit longer than we all hope for, but when it does open, it's going to be definitely worth it. The second thing that was on our community's mind is, as we saw tonight, it's the streetlight outages. And a number of neighborhoods have been going through these. And it's a recurring problematic situation due to, exactly what was said earlier, to the age and the technology of our streetlights. But staff is working on that. And an update to the work that has been done is coming, hopefully, very soon. The main thing I wanted to talk about was the parking meters. Our parking meters downtown. People either love them or hate them. It's very, very clean line. So we are just past our first week of activation of the parking meters. And they're doing their job. In the morning, you go by the parking lots, there's more spaces, there are more spaces on the street. So that's a good thing for some people. In addition to online conversations in the past couple of days, I've also spoken to a number of merchants that have activated their parking permits. And as anything that's new, it takes a little while for people to catch on. And today, there are two more people that have their permits. They just need a little bit more hand-holding, right, and knowing how it works. So this morning, I shared various questions that I obtained in line and in person with staff. I shared it this morning, and I'm asking the city manager to perhaps share those questions on a frequently asked question page on our website, because these are the questions that we're hearing. And then if we post those questions, those questions would be answered, and perhaps we wouldn't have as many outlandish posts about what's going on with the parking meters downtown. So I'm almost done. So tonight, I'm asking the council to consider two things. I'm not asking for a discussion, because that's not within our rules. The two things are, the impact that parking meters have on residents living in the vicinity of the parking enforcement areas. That's one. And two, what should the council be doing to minimize the impacts? To understand these concerns, we need to meet with our residents. We need to be in that room. It's still early in the implementation process. I look forward to discussing my request with the city manager. And perhaps we can jumpstart the revisions to the residential parking permit program that we've talked about in the last few months. Those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Hamilton.
Just brief, this was brought up earlier during the proclamations, but I just want to remind everybody about the inaugural Arab Heritage Festival to be held at Bel Air School right here in San Bruno, Sunday, April 14, from 2:00 to 7:00 p.m. As in the invitation, this festival is a great way to experience and share the Arab culture and traditions, provides a venue to educate, share, and connect with the larger community. And I hope to see you there.
Thank you. Any other comments? Vice Mayor.
Thank you. All right. So I wanted to reiterate to the public that it's generally the council's practice not to respond to public comment. That's generally been the rule. And I know that there has been a lot of public comment around the situation in Gaza, and a lot of silence from the dais. And I just wanted to remind the public that there is a reason for that, that is not because we don't care, or because we're ignoring you, but rather that our practice is, or actually, our policy is, that we can engage in dialogue during those things. However, there have been a number of requests of me personally to state my position and address the public regarding their concerns. And so I do want to do that tonight. I believe some of you have been waiting around to hear this. And so if I kept you here late for this opportunity, I apologize for the delay in that. And I definitely appreciate, not only your presence here, but the ongoing dialogue that we've had over the past several months. And I do have a statement that I want to read regarding the situation in Gaza. I want to make it very clear where I personally stand on the matter. And I want to say that I am deeply moved by the suffering that has been inflicted on Israelis and Palestinians alike. I am saddened by the ongoing loss of so many innocent lives. I wholeheartedly support the ongoing efforts to bring the war to an end and provide the immediate delivery of aid to those that are suffering. There are many troubling issues in our country and around the world. I also realize that those issues impact our residents in very real ways. I may have strong opinions on many of those issues myself, but in order to do the job that I was elected to do, I often have to put those opinions aside as I attend to the city's business. As a son of immigrants, as a parent, as a parent who has lost a son, and as your neighbor, I do understand at least a portion of your pain. As a council, we represent a very diverse population, diverse in ethnicity, religion, and culture. I always do my best to be sensitive to everyone's needs. My goal now, and as it should be, is to bring our community together. And that specific goal has weighed very heavily on my mind over the last several months. And to that end, I have been working on a statement that I want to make, and this is on behalf of myself, nobody else on the council has heard this before. But I am hoping that, as a council, we can get behind some of what's in this statement. And I, after I read this, I will invite my fellow council members to join me in supporting this statement. And this reads, "A statement expressing solidarity with the innocent victims in Palestine and Israel and affirming support for peace. We, members of the San Bruno City Council, wish to express solidarity with all victims of the war in Gaza. The San Bruno City Council has committed to stand united against hate, and therefore we denounce anti-Palestinian bigotry, Islamophobia, and antisemitism that has developed as a result of the war in Gaza. As leaders in our community, we acknowledge the direct and significant impact the war is having on our residents of all nationalities. As your neighbors, we seek to understand and grieve with you, with those suffering here and abroad as a result of this war. As we observe the human toll continuously rising, we openly support any and all efforts to achieve a humanitarian ceasefire. We advocate for the continued diplomatic efforts supporting peaceful dialogue and ultimately achieving equitable and lasting peace in the region. Further, we support all efforts to significantly increase the supply of humanitarian aid to the region, including food, water, medical aid, and electricity. We remain committed to being advocates for the safety, dignity, and equality of all people, regardless of religion, race, or nationality. We urge our community to continue to foster tolerance, empathy, education, and understanding of people of all backgrounds and religious faiths." As I mentioned at the beginning, my colleagues are hearing this for the first time. I'm offering this statement as something that the council can stand behind. And I will invite them all to join me in the statement if they choose to. Or if they choose to make other statements, of course, they are free to do so. But I sincerely hope that this is a statement that expresses the feelings that I have heard from the community, and feelings that I believe are engendered in everything that we do up here. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Alvarez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also have a statement to read. In recent news about the Hamas and Israel war, the President of the United States has called for a temporary ceasefire. He underscored that an immediate ceasefire is essential to stabilize and improve the humanitarian situation and protect innocent civilians. While many took offense when I used the word temporary to describe the conflict between Hamas in Gaza and Israel, I remain confident that a solution would be found. Hence, I feel that an apology is needed to those that I have offended. Therefore, I offer my apology for using the word temporary that is taking longer than we anticipated in solving this conflict. While some residents felt ignored by my silence, I only intended it as a form of respect for your sorrow and your pain. As a council member, I have the responsibility of making a sound decision for this community as a whole, not for one particular group, denomination, ethnicity, and most especially race. With that said, in honor of recognizing April 24 as National Arab American Heritage Month, I would like to propose to agendize raising the flag of Palestine honoring more than 31,000 Palestinians who have been killed and more than 72,000 injured. Thank you.
Thank you for everybody's comments. So to follow that, Councilmember Medina, we talked about powering to the Recreation Aquatic Center. That happened, I'm understanding, Friday, which is, correct, which is good news. So just to let you know. I'm probably not even going to go into the Caltrain thing. It's just was bringing updates on stuff that the staff and what they've done, and what they will be doing the rest of this month. I always can bring it up next time. So I also want to, again, thank very much everyone. Because I think the conversation, as we said that we had last Wednesday, was insightful, was rewarding, and is what it's about. Coming together, sitting together, learning, and living, and improving. And I think that that's the step in the right direction. And I also want to thank everyone for their kindness when I was refused and allowing me to be a part of the process in some way. So thank you for that. So with that, I do want to thank everybody for their comments. I do want to thank those that are here this evening. And thank you for your participation in this evening's meeting, and wish you the best for the rest of the week. And with that, I will adjourn to the next regular city council meeting, which will be held on April 23, 2024, at 7:00 p.m. This meeting is adjourned.